...in favor of the employee. And these are the kind of work rules that exist now in state government that hamstring our ability to effectively manage our workforce.
Are some of these work rules, in your opinion, necessary due to a lack of protection under Maine's existing labor laws?
No, I think our labor laws are quite strong. And I think that someone from the Employee Relations Office would be best able to answer specific questions about the state's collective bargaining agreement in work session. What I can say from a management perspective is that as our workforce shrinks and we rely increasingly on technological solutions, we need workers who are flexible and adaptable and who can do a couple different functions at a given moment depending on whether or not we have a system down or we have someone who's had to take medical leave or things like that. And our workforce is shrinking. Our needs for people who can be flexible are increasing. And these structures prohibit a lot of that. And I think the bills that have been put forth today take some initial steps to help make our workforce more flexible and to address those needs as we move forward.
Representative Mistracchio?
You're welcome. Thank you. And I will apologize for being late, but I will confess that I was at the Yankee Res on stage. And I am a Yankees fan, so, sorry. Get it right out there. But it was really fun. And I did bring cookies for the committee from the north end, so.
Thank you. Wow, awesome.
You'll forgive it. Thank you. I figured I would do it. Ms. Rabinowitz, I just have to follow up on something that you were using as an example. An employee came to work for the state, and it almost sounded like to me, and I just find it hard to believe that you really meant this, that because someone, and on both sides, we can have people who do things that maybe they shouldn't do, but because of poor contract language or deficient contract language, you're saying then that the fault is with the employee who took advantage of that. And I guess I would say that, don't you think that maybe more that whoever wrote that contract didn't really look at what it said? Because I've been on that side, and we've made sure, and you're not suggesting that people shouldn't have bereavement leads?
Not at all, no.
Because that's what it comes down to.
No, no, no. But to say that your bereavement lead is to do employee for someone who passed away 10 years ago is not something that is typically requested. And I think that when we're looking at how tightly the collective bargaining agreement laws are, you know, people look for loopholes. And what we're saying is, we need to stop focusing on loopholes and look at flexibility and how we can be a responsive state workforce. And again, Dass would be the better person to speak to this.
Look, I'm just saying, though, that you brought up the example.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I didn't. So, I mean, it is the nature of management and the union to look at the contract language. I just hope that you're not saying that only an employee would be looking at the contract language. Otherwise, we wouldn't be so careful about how we craft that language.
Exactly.
Because it should mean what we say. And you're not suggesting that we should not have a union that's negotiating that contract, are you? Or are you saying that you would prefer that there be no unions?
I'm stating that I'm supporting the bills in front of us, and if some workers choose not to be part of the union, whether it's the state union or private union or another collective, another public sector employer elsewhere in the state, that they should have that right.
But let's just get back to that one piece. I'm sorry. I just need to understand, because I think that that was not a good example of what you might have been trying to say. And I am asking you, that wasn't even something that was used for training. And if that's what's used for training, I'm concerned about that, that's all.
It was a cautionary tale.
Because that's about contract language.
Right.
Negotiating a contract, not about what we're talking about.
Right. And the state was doing its due diligence to advise managers that they need to be aware of those things and to ask instead of deny when they're approached with things that might seem unusual work force.
Would you just, in summary, in regards to the other 25 right-to-work states, their unemployment levels and general job gains, income levels, would you be able to, I know, just ensure, I guess, working with some other people that have testified, that we have all the information that we need from the U.S. Department of Labor on that?
And we can look up specific answers if there's questions for the work session. On average, there's studies that look at the wages on both sides. And it really depends on from what, as we talked about minimum wage, when Glenn Mills, our chief economist, came before the committee and said, depending on which side you're on the issue, you can look at factors that kind of lean either way. But when we look overall at wages, the cost of living in a lot of the right-to-work states is lower. I lived in North Carolina for several years, which is a right-to-work state, and they experienced significant unemployment during the recession, but they've bounced back. They've reformed their system and are approaching other things. Again, it's not, looking at right-to-work, as we've just said in answering Senator Patrick's questions, it's one tool in the toolbox. It's one, there's a number of economic factors that can be influenced by right-to-work, but we also have to look at the economic environment of the actual state.
Were you working for the Department of Labor, Lynn Hostess, when you were there?
Yes, yes.
And is it your recollection that they were, that the inflexibility of some of their contracts played a role in?
I did not get into that. In fact, the Teamsters had accepted their agreement and supported it. It was the Bakers Union that actually went on strike. And it was an extremely difficult situation. We had more than 500 people, primarily in the Bitterford area, who were laid off, but also all across the state because several of the Teamsters' units worked at distribution centers. I attended a rapid response session for a group of them. And that was, I can say honestly that many of those workers thought that that plant would be bought and they would get their jobs back, and that has sadly not turned out to be the case.
And who, why do you think they felt, who gave them that message, that that was likely?
It was the union members. The union, the Bakers Union, believed that that facility was modern enough to remain competitive. But when Hostess, the buyout actually occurred, that facility was not one of the ones that was chosen to be reopened by the new owners of Hostess Brands.
And, okay, so that sort of speaks to, you've got a trained workforce.
Yep.
You've got a facility sitting empty.
Modern facility.
Which is still empty. So, you know, you're looking at lowest energy rates in New England.
In New England, if they wanted to have a distribution manufacturing center in New England, that location was a prime location, and they chose not to reopen it.
So, do you have any idea why, what factored into that decision?
I don't know.
Or do you here speculate?
I don't know. But obviously, we need to use every tool in the toolbox, taxes, right-to-work, to make these jobs come back to Maine when they leave and to attract new jobs.
And do you have any idea, the workers who were, you know, lost their jobs, where they find themselves today, the story of them?
At the time, we did offer, we had trade readjustment assistance, so some workers were able to retrain. Some workers were close to retirement and chose not to retrain. And some workers chose to go back to work and accept a wage subsidy that would be workers who were over the age of 50. But that layoff occurred in November, and it was a horrible situation, a huge layoff affecting hundreds of people, you know, entering winter. And we hate to see any layoff at the Department of Labor, and that was particularly painful.
Any other questions? Senator Patrick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it was Mr. Butera, I was telling him about the top 15 states for high-tech companies. I went through a list, Massachusetts, Delaware, I went down through the list. Out of that, 15 of the top high-tech companies, only Virginia and Utah are right-to-work states. And Maine seems like we're getting to be a call center kingdom, which I don't necessarily think that's bad, but I don't necessarily think that's good. And we're looking at tools in the toolbox. I'd like to know, what companies are we vying for out there to try to get them here with the problems that we have with energy, transportation, education, workforce, healthcare, taxes?
I think my counterpart, who's following me from DECD, would be better placed to answer that.
Thank you.
One follow-up to that question, I guess would be, to your knowledge, are high-tech companies such as Texas Instruments or Fairchild typically unionized?
I can't speak to that. I don't know specifically. Texas is a right-to-work state, so if they're being, if where their headquarters are might be an indicator.
But we have Texas Instruments here in South Portos.
Right, right.
And to my knowledge, there's not a union present there. Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Rabinowitz?
Senator Ray? Senator Volk and distinguished members of the Labor, Commerce, Research and Economic Development Committee and Representative Kervey. My name is Doug Ray. I'm the Communications Director and Legislative Liaison at the Department of Economic Development. I'm wearing two hats today because I've submitted some written testimony on behalf of DECD in support of LD 49 and 1353. I'm also going to touch on some testimony provided to you also in writing from Peter Del Greco. He's the president of Maine and Company. They handle a lot of the business attraction efforts and are a very important partner with the DECD in trying to get new investment to the state of Maine. The proposed legislation attempts to address one point that has become clear. The universe of decision-makers who prefer right-to-work states is larger than the universe of decision-makers who do not prefer right-to-work states. When we take out the soundbites and the passion certainly and look at the totals, becoming a right-to-work state will encourage more decision-makers to look at the state of Maine. In the past few years, as you heard, Indiana, Michigan, and Wisconsin have all become right-to-work states. As the map that is attached to the testimony that Mr. Del Greco provided indicates, the right-to-work states are growing and certainly spreading across the country. It is far more likely that we will see additional states become right-to-work states than not. One area of the country, as you know, that has not seen right-to-work legislation passed, however, is the Northeast. And Maine certainly has an opportunity to break that trend. Passing right-to-work legislation will present Maine with an opportunity to stand out in the minds of people and those decision-makers who are looking to invest money into a pretty dense population, is what we have up here in the Northeast part of the United States. It will give us an opportunity to lead in a trend that is rapidly heading our way. You can also see in that testimony from Mr. Del Greco that the top 20 U.S. manufacturing projects in 2014, 19 of those top 20 were all in right-to-work states. I do not intend to suggest that right-to-work designation is the only or the most important factor. Certainly, Senator Patrick, you touched on a lot of other factors that are just as important in those decisions. But certainly, this legislation, in particular LD 49 and 1353, will remove an impediment to Maine being able to attract these types of new investments. And these are billion-dollar investments that are happening, that just happened last year, and you can see those states, Nevada, Virginia, Tennessee, South Carolina, Oklahoma. These are massive amounts of jobs, and these are good-paying jobs. And certainly, Maine will have a seat at the table. We don't know who's not coming because they're not calling. You know, you asked, you guys had asked which, you know, who's not coming? Who has decided not to consider Maine? They're not even calling because, as you heard from Mr. Butera, we're automatically off some of those lists. And if we can at least remove that impediment, we'll start to be able to get that seat at the table and be able to get in the conversation. And certainly, we want to be respectful of a lot of the folks who are here and their time. Be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Questions? Senator?
Sorry. Representative Kervey? Thank you, Mr. Ray. Good to see you.
Nice to see you.
I know that you have a lot of experience of attracting businesses to different states, a variety of states. I guess, you know, we have a lot of conversations in here about kind of the pie in the sky, like, oh, well, if we get BMW or if we get some of the manufacturers airplanes. Do you really think that if we change this one section in the collective bargaining laws, that these companies will, it will overcome challenges that we have regarding energy, transportation as broadband? Really, do you really think that it's going to make that much of a difference if all of these companies will be contacting us to come here?
What it will do is it will make Maine more competitive. Again, we've heard, and this is from the people who are Maine a company, they are out trying to attract these businesses. They have heard it, just like Mr. Butera alluded to. You've heard it from these companies that they will not consider a non-right-to-work state. That is one factor. Yes, energy costs are a huge, you know, are a huge concern. We have, we need to reduce our electricity costs, there's no doubt about that. But this is one impediment that we are able to overcome with legislation that will make us more competitive. And, you know, we talked about the pie in the sky. We have great opportunities. We have great assets here in the state of Maine. Brunswick Landing, Maury, these are terrific facilities that could attract some of these major companies. And, you know, they have done a remarkable job down at Brunswick Landing. But this is that one more important tool they could use in trying to even make that facility even stronger and certainly bring in some good quality jobs for Maine people too.
Any other questions? Representative Del Greco and then Representative Mistracchio?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, what you're saying is, companies will not consider all of the Northeast because none of the states in the Northeast are right-to-work states. So, they're not attracted to locating their business in the Northeast corridor at all.
It doesn't look like the manufacturing, of the top 20 manufacturing projects in 2014, it didn't look like if they considered them, they didn't end up going there.
Representative Mistracchio and then Representative Kervey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, so I'm going to just use Massachusetts as an example, because their electricity costs are more than ours. They're not a right-to-work state. And, you know, and their taxes are pretty high. I know, because I used to live there, and I know people that were there. I mean, they have incredibly high lodging taxes, just paid them. Meals taxes, just paid them. And so, I guess if you use your theory, they shouldn't, nobody should be wanting to set their business in Massachusetts, and they're not having any problems. So, I guess I'm asking you, what do you really know about economic development in terms of what's attracting people to a place? If that's the criteria that you're using, and that's what we need to do to make ourselves competitive, it just seems to me that you're really not on the right track. And I guess I need to have you explain to me, what are we, you know, what is it about Massachusetts? Is it, it's a whole lot more things than that? And tell me what those things are other than right-to-work and electricity.
That's a good question, and I'm not up here to talk about Massachusetts. I'm here to talk about Maine. And what I see is our facts, what actually is happening out in the country and how we can compete globally for these type of, this new investment. I mean, what Massachusetts does, you know, I don't really care. I care about what Maine does, okay? And what we need to do is to make our state more competitive for new investment. And this, by removing this obstacle, which a lot of companies and projects see as an obstacle and something they won't even consider, why not do that?
Representative Kervey and then Representative Stuckes.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you again, Mr. Ray. Just to get back to the, you're saying, of the top 20 manufacturers, wouldn't you say that that has more to do with the fact of our, of Maine's proximity to materials and to markets? Wouldn't you say that that's a larger factor than right-to-work?
That's a fair point, and I think they're all factors. I mean, this is a factor. We can't, you know, argue, again, if these decision-makers are saying it is a factor, it's hard to say, for us to come up here and say that it's not. The fact of the matter is, if we remove this impediment to business attraction, we will attract and retain workers in the state of Maine over time. Because naturally, people want to go where they can make money and where they can succeed and prosper. And that will come.
Representative Stuckes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Ray. For those who don't have the, this paperwork in front of them like we do of the top 20 U.S. manufacturing projects in 2014, and those that are listening on the Internet as well, how many of those top 20 projects were in the Northeast?
None of them. Thank you.
Representative Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Ray, I was born, raised, worked, raised a family in that Massachusetts. Down there, we call it Taxachusetts.
Just a reminder, we're asking questions.
I just want to correct, there was one in the Northeast, it was in New York. Amy's Kitchen, it was one. Stand corrected.
Senator Patrick?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mr. Ray, would you be surprised to know that of the top 15 states for high-tech companies? Now, I think we're getting better and better, we're going to be more and more, I think, as the future goes on, but the top 15 high-tech companies, number one is Massachusetts. Number eight is Connecticut. Number 10 is New Jersey. Number 11 is New Hampshire. And number 14 is Vermont. Would you find that?
No, I think that's a fair stat. If we can remove, if there was one specific obstacle that would keep Maine from getting into that list, I would be here leading the charge to try to remove that obstacle, just as we're doing for any type of the businesses that would be looking at Maine if we enact the legislation that you're testifying for.
And would not the greatest tool in the toolbox be for us to lower both energy, transportation, education, workforce, healthcare, and taxes?
I'd say that's a pretty good working list.
That would keep all businesses in Maine plus attract north?
I think that's all part of the puzzle, Senator.
Would you say those are things that, since we're repeating questions, repeatedly, would you say those are things that the administration has been working diligently on for the last six years?
Absolutely, and that work is continuing, and we will certainly welcome the support of the legislature in those areas.
And are those things that can be rectified with passing a law?
Some of them can, yes.
Representative Stuckes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've heard mention of this impediment on businesses, and I guess I'm trying to understand a little bit further how a union member paying their due affects and impedes upon a business. Can you sort of walk me through that?
Yeah, I know that has been addressed several times this morning, where you're talking about a decision and flexibility and a, you know, dictating, being able to have control of your workforce in, as far as being able to make the decisions that change. And, you know, it removes an obstacle for businesses, and it is one thing that they, and again, it's not, when you talk about wages, you know, these are very good-paying jobs in a lot of these states and these projects, whether it's BMW or Tesla Motors. I mean, these are high-paying jobs. So, we're talking about a decision that they make, it's a business decision, when they factor in everything. And it is a factor in where they decide to invest money. So, you'd certainly have to ask a business and ask one of the companies that are on this list, how important that is. And I think there's some other folks who could answer that question.
Follow-up?
Yeah, just a clarifying question. So, when you say flexibility, you're referring to the flexibility of deciding someone's wages?
I think it's, again, your words, not mine. It's flexibility in whether it is job duties, it's a flexibility of being responsible solely for your workforce and not having someone else make those decisions for you.
Senator Patrick?
Is there a chance we can get a list of the names of the companies that said that they wouldn't consider Maine unless we had right-to-work?
I'll try to put some of those together. Again, it's--
But I think the point has been made, Senator, that actually you're, we're not get, those businesses that are looking for states that are right-to-work are not looking to Maine ever, you know, like, were immediately checked off as not a possibility. I believe that's been stated repeatedly by a number of people testifying. Representative Mistracchio?
Thank you, Madam Chair. But to be fair, if you're going to give an anecdotal example of something, then I think you should be able to. Because I guess, I'm really saying, I mean, I hear him say, I hear Mr. Ray say, that he doesn't want to compare Maine to any states, but yet, I haven't been here very long, but I've heard lots of comparisons to other states. So, it's easy to say something and not back it up. So, I'm asking, if you're going to say something, then please back it up with some information. I don't think it's hard to say that maybe, you know, Boeing didn't want to come here, but maybe they don't want you to say that they didn't want to come here because we have unions. I don't know. But I'd like you to back up what you have to say about, if you say it, you should be able to back it up.
The, and again, the top 20 manufacturing projects last year, we're talking last year, this is recent history here. We're not going back, this is just in one year. 19 of those 20 projects were in right-to-work states.
And some are really, really large projects, 650 employees, some are as small as 65. So, these aren't all gigantic projects. It would be interesting, I think, for the work session if perhaps Mr. Del Greco could get us the information, this is from his testimony, of what the average wage on these projects, if that's available. I don't know whether it would be sort of interesting, anecdotal information. Senator Campbell?
Not only the wages, but I think there's a lot of times, a lot of these big businesses make their decisions and make them public, why did they go to a certain state? I'd like to have, if we can find, dig out the information, what were the cumulative reasons why they decided to go to a specific state over numbers?
Any other questions? Representative Stuckes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I guess what I would say is, if you contact the communications directors or communications departments of those businesses, I'd be interested to see how many are willing to respond. Yes, that was a factor in why we decided to locate our business here. I expect none of them will be willing to comment.
Representative Stuckes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. While we're collecting data like that, I'd be interested to know what the average wage is in Bedford at the Wonder Bridge plant currently.
Any other questions? Thank you. Okay. Any other members of the department or administrations? I don't think so. So, we're going to move on now with our designated proponents. So, our first designated proponent is going to be George Antwistle, Superintendent of Scarborough And just for committee members, this deals with LD 1010. I believe Mr. Antwistle is only prepared to talk about LD 1010.
Senator Volk, Representative Kervey, and members of the Labor, Commerce, Research and Economic Development Committee, I am George Antwistle, Superintendent of the Schools in Scarborough, and I'm here today to talk with you on behalf of the Maine School Superintendents Association in support of LD 1010. Superintendents, support this bill because as the chief administrators of school districts were charged with providing all students with a comprehensive quality education within the confines of a balanced budget approved and paid for by the taxpayers. This bill gives us an additional tool to help manage those budgets. It will give school boards the flexibility to contract non-teaching services when they determine it is in the best interest of our core mission of educating children. That flexibility is needed now more than ever as the cost of education is rising and greater demands are being placed on the schools and on the property taxpayers. In the proposed annual budget, more than 100 districts are experiencing a loss of state aid, while the required mill rate for education paid by local property taxes is at an all-time high. My district of Scarborough, we've lost 32% of state funding in the last six years, and we're slated to lose another $1 million next year if the budget goes through as proposed. That would bring our total loss of subsidy to over 58%. We understand these scenarios are unsustainable, and looking for ways to save money outside of the classroom is a focus for us. If we don't, we're going to be forced to eliminate positions and reduce programs that directly impact our-- and reduce programs that directly impact our students. And this has been the situation in Scarborough. In fact, I'm rebuilding from some of those situations. Our district attempted to be proactive in 2012, entering negotiations to cut subcontract out custodial services by July of 2015. We reasonably estimated that through subcontracting, the district could save about $250,000 annually. Majority of a, of a, an arbitration panel ruled against the school board in 2014, essentially arguing that saving money was not a compelling enough reason to subcontract. That protracted negotiation ended up costing the district $70,000 in legal fees. It was specifically related to that, that issue. There are other districts in the state that have ultimately won the right to subcontract through negotiation where tens of thousands of dollars get spent on legal fees and wouldn't those be far better spent in the classroom? I would say as a school leader, absolutely. LD 1010 is a straightforward bill that simply gives school boards and superintendents one more option when trying to reduce costs outside of the classroom in order to pay for programs and instruction that prepare students for success in graduation or as we like to say, for success in college, career and civic engagement. So, we ask for your support. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions on behalf.
Thank you, Dr. Entwistle. It's good to see you.
Nice to see you.
Representative Purvey?
Thank you, Senator, and thank you for being here today. Thanks for the questions.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Um, I just have a question, you know, you said that this bill gives school boards the flexibility to subcontract non-teaching services. I'm not seeing that in the bill. Number one, this, this wouldn't just apply to school boards and it wouldn't apply to just non-teaching services. I think a lot of us have concerns of where this could go. So, your testimony is, is specifically to this, but not to the bill as a whole?
Mine is, mine is to the bill as a whole and I believe that the intent is, is limited to non-teaching positions. That's the position that I support, non-teaching positions.
Representative Masrafia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dr. Entwistle. I guess the, um, one, one thing that I would like to see for our work session would, if you could send us a copy of that arbitration decision, because I'd be really interested, as a former school board member for 12 years, I know that I've had many of those kinds of discussions with, with our, our employees and the, and the unions and I just would have to see what the, what the,
Sure.
what their decision is set for the work session for this state.
Happy to do it.
Senator Patrick and then Representative Austin?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Basically, I would say reading your testimony here because of the state not funding its obligation to education.
I would say I'm here because of a number of obstacles I have in attempting to provide the best education I can for the 3,100-plus students that I have responsibility for in Scarborough. I do believe that the, the business of leading a school district, particularly a larger one, is very complex and I would prefer to have options to be able to subcontract out those areas that are not necessarily central to my educational mission. But, but full funding would absolutely be welcomed, for sure.
Follow-up, would you be asking for this change if you were fully funded?
Yes.
Representative Austin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Entwistle, thank you for being here. Were you able, have you been able to look over the two cases of Arden and your folks in Scarborough to discern why they were awarded, I don't know if that's the appropriate word, but the decision went to let them to go outside the district and your folks weren't, other than the fact that, that, that way of statement that that wasn't enough to save money to, on education? Were you able to compare side by side?
I, I don't, I don't know the specific, the specific details that would make the case different. I, I only know the result of the arbitration.
In your opinion, because this probably is not the first time you've had some arbitration done in the district, would you, would you be able to, even knowing the side that this is certainly a very discretionary situation and it depends on the day as to actually who is looking at the case, maybe as much as what the details are?
Do I have concern that in some ways it can, it can matter about who the three people are, what the day is and how they're feeling on that day in terms of an arbitration outcome? Is, is that your question?
I guess that, that kind of puts it on the light side, but that's, that's the, the way of it.
I would say, sure, I think that there, there's always a possibility that had there been three different people or a different mix and a different day, that we may have prevailed.
And how long did that process take?
I started, I'll be starting my fifth year as superintendent. I started looking at that area of cost and how we might more efficiently manage that area as soon as I came in in 2011. So, so it was ongoing for, for over three years.
Representative Seto, would you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I sat, I sat on the school committee in Bedford and we were contracting janitorial services to Aramark. Decision was made to no longer do that and we decided to have, have custodial staff be directly employed by, by the school department, so not subcontracted out. So, I'm, I'm trying to understand why the Bedford School Department a couple of years ago was able to decide to no longer contract out and hire directly. And you, other school districts are seeming to be struggling with doing that. I, I'm unclear as to why this law necessitates, is needed in this case to, to do what you're trying to do.
I'm not clear with your question, sir.